Please join us to pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with every equal justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there motion?
No motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all of in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is approval of the minutes, 11:14:22.
I can listen when we have 15 minutes, 11:14:22.
I'll second in a second. Discussion, changes? Go.
Just a couple of small things. On page two, under Citizens' Comments and Concerns, item's not on the agenda. In what looks like it's about the 10th line, which starts, "Because they have nowhere else to go," we should make that "nowhere" without a space in between. About four lines later, the line starts with, "Board of Selectmen has perends 30 minutes in listen to recording," closed perends. I think that suggests that Allison wasn't sure what was taking place at that point in the meeting, and I'm not sure that we shouldn't postpone approval of these until she's clarified what she means by that.
Can she do that? Allison, can you clarify that?
Yep. I can.
You can? Go ahead.
That's right. I'll have to listen to the recording.
Oh, okay. All right, then I guess we better postpone.
I'd be in favor of that.
Would you favor that?
It makes sense.
Makes sense? Mary Lee?
Yes, sure.
Everybody's in agreement? Okay. We also have another one here. Emergency meeting, Monday, the 21st, at 10:00 a.m. That involves the project, the drainage project at Little Rock. And I was there along with Dave and Brent, and also with Joe Mark and Dick Pooms and Allison Harley, according to second. That's correct?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for the emergency meeting on Monday, November 21st.
And a second? Okay. Any discussion? All of in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
I was saying something there.
You guys are paying, sure, okay.
Who seconded the motion?
I did. Allison, Joe.
Thank you.
So, Bob and Mary Lee are both abstinent.
Are there any citizens who wish to comment or have concerns? Item's not on the agenda, who wish to address the board? The ladies first.
Mary McIntyre, speaking tonight as chairperson of the SEDR committee. We had a special meeting, November 3rd, in which we invited in local businesses, and it was fairly well attended. About 21 people, businesses. And we asked them three questions. What are your concerns about your business? What are your wishes for your business's future? And what do you think the town of Councilton needs to do to attract visitors, tourists, and potential residents to our town? And essentially, we used these questions to help bring this to an end. And then, we evaluated, we went back, or I did, with Devin Neary with RRPC and Tyler Richardson with CEBRR. And we evaluated what all the brainstorming was. We had big sheets of paper here, and we put them into a Word document. And we came up with some areas that we can tackle somewhat quickly, which we're going to refer to as mowing and food. And we're gonna try and bring the people in for this. But one is broader feedback. We want to reach more businesses to answer these same questions. So Beth Murphy's working on that right now. Marketing. One of the big concerns is that everybody feels that the town get lost. The Woodards brought up that when they've had customers come to their store, and before they bought a boat there, were there, they're like, oh! We didn't know of Lake Farming. And many people chimed in that that was a concern. So, one of the very big topics of discussion was getting signage up. Welcome to Castleton, home of Lake Farming, and we need to reach them early. And Eric Splat has suggested maybe through the board that we're not allowed to have him in, uh, Philboard.
Philboard.
Philboard, thank you. Philboards, just before what would be exit one, which really isn't even Mark gets it on, but just before the welcoming ceremony, let me work. And that's something that we're gonna go back and revisit with Eric and maybe other business people, that maybe they could chip in and do some kind of advertisement there, so that would be a expense for the town. And then the other part of marketing, Tyler Richardson's group, the Chamber of Economic Development for the Rutland region, they have two people, Olivia Lyons and Lionel Jepson, who are involved in marketing, and they will do some spotlights, and maybe get that out on some kind of media for us. So Ted Molna is contacting them moving forward with that portion. And then, also, along the same lines, to promote us some more, we're checking with the resource of the content lab at the college. And that's to do two things, that's to help marry us with the college some more, and get the college students to realize some of the resources that we have right here in town. And number four, where you, this board comes in, is one of the largest concerns, is every topic that we discussed, was the need for water and septic.
You mean water or municipal sewer, Mary?
I mean water, like public water, and septic, for like, Wooders need septic.
Well, they're talking about municipal sewer.
Okay.
Wooders are talking about municipal sewer. They already have a septic system at the houses, but not at the buildings?
Okay, yes, they're talking about municipal septic. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
As many of these businesses were. So Devin believes that the town has had a study, and I think Mike may have mentioned it, Mike did mention it at the meeting as well. And if we could get that out and dust that off, I'm not familiar with it, but I'm guessing you guys are.
It was done a while ago, so not everybody may be here.
But is that something that you can easily access? He said, obviously, it's outdated, and obviously, the cost would need to be adjusted, but it would be a starting point.
Some of it the board's already heard. The Crystal Heights part was updated, and we got one on Deco Terrace. And we're still waiting for something on Creek Road and Preston Lane.
And, you know, Mark Brown's nervous about not being able to extend his business. We heard that before I gave him, when this board has heard that. And then, you know, Bob Woodard brings up a really valid point. Now, he can bring somebody in and, you know, sell them, you know, $100,000 boat, but before they leave, or when they arrive to sign all the papers, they need to use the bathroom after coming from wherever, get to show them to their port apartments. It's not terrible, anybody. So they would like that, and then they also bring up that, although they have wells, they think that once you have the town sewer, the problem is going to be more demand for water as well, to have that function.
Did you explain to them that the town did not provide municipal water?
Yes.
District 5, District 1, and District 3?
Yes. I did discuss that, and I didn't, one of my assignments was, the other board members got assigned, I, one of my assignments is to come here to ask about resurrecting, that's the studies that had been done and contact carried out. So I, once the broader feedback is received, I'll share all the feedback.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody have any questions for the board members, for Mary? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Doorn. I live on Sands Hill Road, and I just want to speak very briefly about the project, thinking of appealing the DRV ruling on the Sands Hill senior facility. And what I wanted to say is simply, I don't think the board needs to get involved in it at all. I think the best choice is just to say, let Hell and Hell appeal if Hell and Hell wishes. I don't know if you had a chance to read their request to the DRV to reconsider, the first decision to DRV, and I thought it was a solid request. Zach signed it, it seems to me he had help from lawyers. I think now, if Hell and Hell wants to appeal, they'll just go find some more lawyers, and they will appeal it. And the issue is really somewhat narrow compared to issues that we've had in the past. The issue is, did the Development Review Board make the proper decision when it decided that memory care could not be part of that building? And I think the appeal would say, well, no, they didn't, and then the DRV defense would be, yes, we did. But I think Hell and Hell can do that without getting the town involved, and I just wanted to say that. And they just have to see their request for reconsideration, which I think was a solid request. You just don't need the town. They did it. And I think if they want to appeal to the Environmental Court, they can do the same thing. If it happens, you don't agree with me, and you say, no, the town should be involved in that appeal. First thing I wanted to know is, will you then use a lawyer to present your point of view? And if you use a lawyer, will Hell and Hell use a lawyer? And if you use a lawyer, and Hell and Hell use a lawyer, will the DRV use a lawyer? So you're gonna have at least three lawyers involved. I presume Hell and Hell will want its own lawyer. And then it's possible the resistance will need to have a lawyer, and so we're gonna have four lawyers arguing about this. I just think that Hell and Hell, if they want to go forward with the project, can make their own appeal and see what the Environmental Court has to say, and then if the, I don't know how this works really, but if the DRV wants to defend its decision, maybe the DRV has a lawyer, and the DRV's lawyer can go say, no, this is why we made the decision we made, and the court will just rule. So I'm on to say that I don't think you need to get involved, I think Hell and Hell can do a really good job, and I think the issue is somewhat narrow or specific. Did the DRV make the right decision when it decided memory care couldn't be part of that building? Well, thank you. Good, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any questions for John? John? Okay. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Item's not on the agenda. You have anybody?
Right.
The only person to meet, Zach Hale. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Zach.
I just wanted to come to the board tonight and speak on behalf of the purchase and sales agreement that we currently have, and specifically about the due diligence periods in which we have been granted, and bringing to your attention that, you know, we have had this, we've had this decision made by the DRV, which has, you know, put a monkey wrench into things, and we are in need of some additional time to continue to do our due diligence, and I would like to make a request to the board to extend our due diligence and provide, Mike, perhaps, with the ability to sign an addendum that I can have drafted, or I can bring it to the next one if you'd like to read it first, would basically be the same request as last time, creating that six due diligence period for Act 250, and allowing for local permitting in due diligence period number five.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions for Zach?
Just one, Jim.
Yes, Dick.
What's the timeframe we need to have, you would need to have this done, Zach?
So, at this time, we just completed due diligence period number four, which was allowed for local permitting, and we're currently in due diligence period number five, which is November 13th, 2022, to May 11th, 2023. And so, at this time, I would just request that we allow in due diligence period number five to allow for a local permitting. At this time, it's only for Act 250, so allow us until May 11th, 2023, to, for the local permitting aspect, and then allow for due diligence period number six, which will be created another 180 days, which we can do for the Act 250.
Okay. You answered my question, Zach. Thank you.
Board? Folks?
I guess, I'm not really sure what we have to do, but you and Mike have to get together, Zach, and make out the big work, and...
Yeah, so there was addendum number one to purchase-sales agreement that we had signed on May 12th, 2022, which outlines pretty much just extending this due diligence period for another six months. I mean, if you would all wait before you devote on it, for me to come back with something drafted, then I can totally do that. I just want to make sure we're on the same page before I expend any resources to put something like that together. And so right now, I'm asking for an additional six months, and I can, you know, put that in the agreement, bring it back next time if that's what we all agree on right now.
I refuse myself.
No motion.
I agree, too, but Joel's got a question, too.
Well, I was just gonna say, I agree to it in principle, but I think it'd be preferable to see adopted before we formally approve it.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Zach, can you put something together and submit a proposal for the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, I can definitely do that.
Okay, that would be the preferable methodology here.
I agree.
You agree with that, Bob?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a plan, Zach?
Yep, yep, I will come back to the next meeting with that addendum, so that it's presented, and you know exactly what it looks like.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Anybody else, Mike?
Allison's the only other person.
Okay, if not, we'll move on. I understand the police chief is tied up in a situation, and has to postpone the police report. He'll be here as soon as he can.
So we have...
So we move on to something very controversial. The mowing bids. I believe we have those in our packet, I guess it's the same, two people who bid who did the job this year.
Actually, the last two years.
Two years?
I, what I, board, I don't have the last year's numbers to compare that to. Don't have the sheet for you to compare those. So it's not gonna, if you really want that number, this can be postponed until the next meeting, if you want to compare, but I'm not sure how important that is to you or not, but the prices did go up. Obviously, talking to the two contractors, fuel costs attributed mostly to the increase. The second one on bid packet number two, I'm sorry, on third page, bid packet number one, the totals weren't there. So I did the, this was for 23 weeks, so the mowing cost per week at $639, times 23 weeks, that number is $14,697. So if you multiply that times two years, that's $29,394. And the other two are one-time spring cleanup and one-time fall cleanup.
That's covered in the budget?
No.
What?
The, under the old budget it was.
Yeah.
But as we move into preparing the draft budget for next year, this would have to be added to it, the delta between what was there over the past two years and what the new number may be.
The question I had was, one contractor's bidding on package number one, and then the other contractor's only bidding on package number two?
Correct.
They're not bidding against one another?
That is correct. And they did, they did that the last time, so they're, they both bid on the same thing that they've been mowing for the last two years.
Okay. Okay. They're not going head-to-head, or are they either?
No. And if you look at bid packet number two, it's, the bigger projects are the ones that bid, are in bid packet one, and that's why it's more money.
Correct. What's your recommendation, Mike?
Well, I was gonna say, if Mike doesn't know what last year's figures were, and doesn't have a sense that these are within the budget that he is trying to propose for next year, I think we should postpone this decision.
Well, just to be clear, this is beyond what was in the budget. So we, the select order have to review that and decide, in that next year's budget, do you want to, it's not just next year, either, it's the year after that.
Or two years.
Yeah, that you would agree with that number. So I can give you the numbers from last year, may not mean a hell of beans compared to what they're bidding on now, but the elephant in the room is, I gotta add something to a budget if it's more, and that's, that number I can't give you right now because I don't have in front of me what we budgeted for last year, and then compare it to these and say, it's, what they're proposing now is $8,000 more, or $5,000 more, I don't have that number in front of me.
But you're failing, folks.
We can wait, but it is what it is, and you only got one bidder in each package. It's not like you have three bidders in package one, three bidders in package two.
And you're also the contractors that have historically done this, correct?
They have been doing this for now since I've been here. Once we, once the corrections department got, could no longer do this, then it went to private contractors, and these are the two contractors that have done everything for us for the last almost four years.
Can you put this out for bid, and these are the two responses you got?
Correct.
The only two?
The only two.
And then I think I would like to know what the delta is, if you can be prepared to discuss that next meeting, and then we can make a decision then. Does that sound good, Dick?
Sound good to me. Does you, folks?
Postpone this, will you?
Yeah.
Mike can have some more information for us at that point in time.
Okay. Moving on to the housing trust. Mike, would you care to explain this? Looks like they're looking for some money.
Yeah, I mean, I really can't explain a whole bunch. I just got this in the mail, and they're asking for a donation, and unless you're tasking me to go ask them what they do with their money besides what they put in an ad, that's why, that's why I gave it to the board, Mike. This is a hot potato, I don't appropriate money, so here's a letter, they're asking for money, and you, I don't know if you have to make a decision tonight, but it's on your plate to say, do you want to consider it or not?
Is this something we've contributed to before?
What's that?
Is this something we have contributed to before?
No.
We haven't? Okay.
Why aren't they coming to us, like...
Like an annual appropriation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, if you, if this is something that you want to consider, I can certainly go back to them and just say, submit a letter for an annual appropriation, rather than a donation.
Right.
I guess it's all a donation.
Yeah, as would I. How about you, Derek?
I'm okay with that.
Mary Lee?
Same.
Okay. We're all okay.
I'll go, I'll come back to them, see if they want to do an annual appropriation.
Okay. Purchasers for approval? I don't believe we, I don't believe we have any. Not to my own judgment. Okay, move on to warrants for approval.
Okay, I'll start. Make a motion, we approve warrant number 1128R for $650. Warrant 1128 for $319,407.88. Warrant 1123 for $8,069.70. Warrant 1117 for $6,635.10. Warrant 1123P for $16,444.85. And warrant 1117P for $16,757.22.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
You have a second? Discussion. Go.
I had a question on the warrant number 1123, specifically the payment to, about park and fishing wildlife for fishing and hunting licenses. I couldn't imagine why we would be doing that.
The only, the only thing I can think of, this, I'm just off the cuff, I don't, I've never dealt with this before, but the town clerk sells hunting and fishing licenses, so I'm not sure if there's a fee that we have to pay to them to get the licenses, or something, I'm sure. I'd have to find out later. But we do, the town clerk does sell them.
This question came up several years ago, and the answer to that was that when the town clerk sells those fees, a certain percentage of that has to go to the state. The balance stays with the town, just like when town tackle sells a license, they get a commission, you know, of $20 or whatever you spend on a fishing license. They get to keep four of it, send the other 16 to the saver, or whatever the number is that really goes up. And that's what that was several years ago, it's probably in the same now.
I'll give clarification.
So they're sending the state $153, is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah, yeah.
We send that to the park and fishing wildlife, is that right?
That's the other, it's a payout.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are paid for the whole amount of the license being purchased, but then we send most of that to the state?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. I can, that's reasonable. I am. So I educate myself as well.
Yeah, I know this came up, and it might have been before you were down there, and you recall my question being asked this little bit.
Any other questions regarding warrants? If not, all of in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Repose. Warrants are... We have three others, I believe.
I approve warrant number 1129 for $320. Warrant number 1124P for $654.67. Warrant number 1118P for $654.67.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
You have a second? Discussion. If you don't, all of in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
You move today?
Thank you. Motion passes.
Still have any?
No complaints? I haven't been around, so they could have complained, but it wasn't me.
Well, if you want to do something like that, no, this is all too bad. When you hear something like that, notice the difference. No, only nine.
Nine.
Not 146, which is.
No.
We're not that big of a.
No.
No, I didn't know you were done.
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
So you guys go back?
Well, that was all, right then? That was all, Joe?
Well, I'll take the three that you're not gonna sign.
Split the stack. I'll be over sure. You traveling this week, Don?
Yep. I'm gonna go to Boston on Wednesday and New York City on Saturday.
Well, you're, you're going down shopping, huh?
I don't know what maybe, I'm not sure. They might be what I know.
I think so. Thank you.
The Rockettes are back in full swing, so.
What's that?
The Rockettes are back in full swing.
Are they?
There's three.
They're not ever going to be a big trip.
That's probably what they're calling them, is you know.
What is it?
The Rockettes.
The Rockettes?
Yeah, that would always be a big push trip in this area.
the emergency meeting. And I believe we should probably correct that.
So do you need a motion to add the approval of the minutes for November 21st of the agenda?
We do.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay.
I can vote on that, yeah?
Sure you can. For anything you want.
Okay, Joe.
Select board comments and/or concerns. Mary Lee?
I have both.
Okay. Well, we started in a good place.
Because of the colder and the emergency had to be done and, and the hole in the protein tanks, it brought things more to mind. This has been going on like two and a half years or something and the state has to do something and we have to do something and the state has to do something. Now we'll move on to the raining rocks that come off from the, from the cord. The state's supposed to do something about that, we can't do anything about it. Precision Auto runoff is going down under their building or their parking lot or something. Again, the state has to do it, we can't do anything. And the other, the really big thing that has come is the gas tank up at the town garage where they have to walk across it for a ditch ditch. We're looking for someone to fall and get hurt badly. And is this something that should always be pushed to the state? I mean, especially this walking across this tank in the winter time with no railing or anything. I know we're in the process of changing it, but I'm concerned about our liability for all of these. What if one of these rocks hit a kid in the head and kills him and we've done nothing? Isn't there something we can do?
Where are you back on them?
I'm on all four. I mean, I think.
Well, you were on the walking across the cat, does that anything to do with walking across the catwalk or?
Well, I think we're opening ourselves up to liability.
I see.
Okay. And specifically, I just thought those four particular things. And actually, probably the, the catwalk would probably be the most dangerous with the stone on it with no railing or anything because they have to walk across the whole length of it to get a little ditch ditch. And aren't we really opening ourselves up to a, a liability here?
Mike, could you address what's being done up there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm clueless on that too. I don't. You talking about the town, town diesel thing?
Yes.
What are they doing?
Which part?
Well, what do they stick in the tank for?
See how much is in it.
Okay, you can do that right from the end, right from the catwalk. You don't have to walk across the whole tank.
I, I'm not sure how they check it, so, but you know, I'm sitting here listening to take notes and say, let me check into it and see what they're doing.
Oh, okay. I just assumed you got it from him.
No, I couldn't, from the guy up to.
Okay, I don't know what, why.
Up in the town garage.
I delivered to that tank. He doesn't have to do that. Here or there.
That's what they told me, that they.
If they're walking across the tank without safety, without proper safety protocols, then.
Right.
Public Works Director needs to address that.
That's something I can, that, you know, it's an OSHA thing for us too, so I can look into that, but I mean, it's handrails and we can mod, we can, we can do, hopefully we can do what we need to do, but I don't know that they, I, I wasn't aware they had to walk all the, across the catwalk to check that.
Because the three inch fill is right off the catwalk. You're on the catwalk, you turn, three inch fill is right there. There's no reason for them to walk all the length of the tank. I just.
I, I, I don't know who told you, but it's irrelevant. I'll, I'll figure out what's going on and.
Did that?
Yeah, find out why people were on the catwalk, they don't, they don't need to be.
Okay.
And when we talk about that, if you were to fall off to your, to your left, if you're walking straight, practically fall off your left, here's this greatly molded, practically break your back, but it knocked your head out. So I'm, I'm just bringing up concerns of possibilities of suits against us.
Do you have something else, Mary Lee?
No, that's it.
That's it? How about you, Bob?
I'm sorry.
Mike, can I just weigh in on this?
Sure.
Because some of this stuff that Mary Lee brought up, the blasting and the precision auto, we did look into that stuff and the state, because it's a state highway, we can't work on it, but they just repaved it, so I'm now, I really should follow up, I guess, now with Steve, the owner, and see if he's got water problems because what was causing it was the wheel ruts. And they shimmed the road out, so hopefully there isn't a problem anymore, but the water was just trailing down from Sand Hill, just falling in those wheel ruts and the low point where it dumped off was into his parking area. So I will make a note to see if the water has actually changed its course based, do it, do with the paving. And V-Trans was in the village today, taking, they had surveyors there and they're surveying and I pulled up and asked them why, and they said, maybe, we usually do this for paving projects. And I said, well, that makes sense because they're supposed to pave this in 2024. And he said, well, that, that would make sense because it takes about two years from the time they do their stuff to the project is engineered and done, so that would be, hopefully be addressed. We'd have to work with V-Trans to address it during the paving project to make sure the road is pitched correctly so that the water doesn't go into his, into his business, but I will follow up with them about the, the paving they just did and maybe that cured it. Because they, if you notice, they did all area over. And then the blasting, we've had our police up there, I've called state agencies, the state police, and it's out of our jurisdiction, so we can't do anything to them besides, unless they're violating our zoning ordinance for some reason.
But don't they have to have the, the mat or the net or whatever it's called?
Yeah, this, according to the state, and this is a trooper that I talked to that runs it, there is no requirement for that. It might be a nice thing to do, but it's not a requirement.
So there's nothing that the people that live there have any recourse, that they might, well, hint a rock goes through somebody's.
Are we talking about Blissville?
Yes.
Well, that goes to the U.S. Bureau of Mines and the Public Safety Department in the state of Vermont.
Which you have.
The U.S. Bureau of Mines has, has control of jurisdiction over that. And the state of Vermont's Public Safety has jurisdiction if there's something dangerous there.
So in other words, these landowners have to appeal to there?
That's who they, that's who they go with.
Do you know if there's been an appeal there?
They, they actually got fined.
Yep.
Decore got fined.
They got fined and I believe there was a suspension of the license.
Yeah. Are they still doing it?
I think Decore had to hire another person to supervise the blasting because the person who was responsible for the erroneous blast you're talking about, they, they lost their license at least for some time, I don't know for how long.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
This involves you, Mr. Lee. Last year, you sent a letter to the electric control board asking them why they denied a couple different individuals in one place, so.
Yep.
Did we ever give a response to them?
Yeah.
We did?
They issued, they issued a license.
They, so somebody got a license to open up the electric.
Yes, they did.
Okay, okay.
It's, the shelving's up right now, I just went in there.
Yep. Oh, okay.
That's all they was waiting for was the shelving and, and the cash register.
Oh, okay.
No product on the shelves yet, though, Bob.
No, no, no.
Where's that?
Beverly King?
What's that?
Beverly King, yeah. Anything else, Bob?
Um, yeah, but it has to be in that executive session.
Okay. Dick?
Just a quick thing. I've been taken this round for a while and it's possible that we may wind up retaining the village school. And if so, I think we need to address this with our rec department and maybe the town manager needs to do this. I don't believe that the rec department actually has a long-term plan on what they would like to do with that building that's actually realistic. And if I'm not saying this right, please jump in, anybody that's got a, what I would like to do is suggest that we task the rec commission and the new rec director with coming up with a, a longer-term plan on what they would like to see done if they have the use of that building and how they would expand the rec program to properly utilize the facility if they, if we keep it, et cetera. Am I making sense?
Yeah, you left one thing out. Yeah, exactly. That's what I sort of mentioned, Mr. Lee. What do you plan to pay for it? Yeah.
Well, that's part of the plan is that.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't say that.
Well, obviously, they would have to figure out a way to create at least some revenue to cover at least some or all the expense of that building.
Yep.
And that's where I'm going with this is, you know, it's all nice to say, yeah, we want to keep that building and we want to use it, but the question is, how do we pay for it? And what, if anything, can rec do to contribute to that? So there we go. So I'm not sure just where we go from here. If anyone else has any brilliant ideas, I'd love to hear them.
Do you got your hand up, Mike?
I'd say task me to work with the rec commission and the rec director to come up with their business plan on what they, for programming and cost and, and, and work out some business plan that says they, what they can pay for and, you know, versus what programs they're gonna try to have. They wanted, then they asked for three years and try to get their program up and running. Well, they should have at least a five-year plan probably to present to the select board that shows how they plan on using the building and some of the costs associated with it. And, and I'm, I'd love to do that, work with them to get that done.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that a proposal that the rec commission gave to our CBS committee, which Mary Lee and I have, of course, seen, should be shared with the full board and, and I would invite you to provide feedback to the rec and rec commission and the recreation and parks director. Mary Lee and I each had some responses in the context of our meetings, but I think you all should see that, that's kind of a, could be considered a starting point for that plan.
Sounds like a good suggestion to me.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to ask, where do you think come up with these buildings that we're gonna retain the building?
I'm not saying we are, we aren't, but if we are and it's safe, or since this, this petition comes to pass and it's voted in favor, favorably, then we're gonna keep it for three years whether this board wants to or not. We need to have a plan on how we're gonna proceed.
Absolutely. I just, I didn't know if something happened.
And if the board, and if the board has a change of heart, this board or the collective two boards have a change of heart and decide to keep the building, then there needs to be a plan in place to do something with the other and let it just sit there and do nothing.
Well, that's, and as, as you said, that is the responsibility of the recreation department.
Yeah.
It's not the responsibility of the select board to draft the plan.
That's correct. I'm just trying to kick the, I'm trying to, trying to get the ball rolling, so to speak.
Okay. Anything else?
Just one last thing. How hard are we pushing to sell this building? Do you have it out on all the websites that you possibly have?
It's been out there?
Yes, it has been out there and we've, and I've got to talk to the, to the select board in executive session about some stuff, but about the sale of the building, or not the sale, interested buyers and.
So you've had more than the two that you had like three months ago? Okay, good.
Anything else on the select board's concerns? Joe?
We, last meeting, Wedbird visited us and presented a document for our consideration and she asked for a response and I think Mr. Combs assured her that she would get a response and I think we should decide what that would be. And if, I'd be content to have one of us draft that with consideration for the board in the future.
Okay.
Would I hate that to happen, Joe?
I'd rather not. I often jump in when it comes to drafting things, but I, I don't know that I've got my finger on the pulse of the board enough to do that. So Jim, would you be?
This is the one offer that we received.
No, Wendy's request of getting.
Oh, yeah. She's been, she has been assured that as soon as a decision is made, that she will receive an answer in writing. And all it's in discussion. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
As long as we're standing on top of that.
Sure.
Don't want that to get away from us.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Need an executive session, Mike? For real estate. Real estate. Okay.
Making a motion, we go into executive session at 7:47 with the board and the town manager for real estate.
Give us, give us a second. A second? Yes. Discussion?
If it's on the sand hill, I'll refuse myself.
Not this one.